Just pulling up, okay. We'll get started in just a minute. Commissioner Sweeney's in the parking lot, so we'll just wait a couple of minutes so she can join us. I'd like to call to order the September 6th meeting of the Planning Commission. Welcome all of you to our chambers here. We don't seem to have a flag, so I guess we'll have to pledge allegiance to the one in the picture over there. Mary, would you like to lead us to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Vice Chair Oberstein?
I'm here and present. I don't know what the difference is.
Chair Kissner?
Here. Now it's public forum time. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not on the listed agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in any discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? Public comment is closed. Next item is consent items. And I would like to move items seven and eight from the regular agenda to the consent items if no one has any objections. Are there any comments? I'm not asking you yet, I'm asking the public. May I have discussion with the Commission?
Now look at your agenda. Seven and eight, wait just a minute.
Item seven is, just so everyone knows, is a design review on Spring Mountain Road.
I had, I had a question about it.
And item eight is a design review on Fulton Lane. And we've heard both of them quite recently. So my choice would be to just put them on the consent calendar. If I have no public comment, then I'm going to ask for Commission's comments, please.
Go ahead. Well, I had a question. Maybe should have asked before, but I didn't, so I have a question about it. On eight, I mean on seven, on the, not on the Spring Mountain one, on the other one, on item eight. No.
On Fulton Lane?
So you're doing Spring Mountain and Fulton Lane, those, I have no problem with those.
Okay. May I have a motion to move in the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Oberstein?
Yes.
And the second was?
Bobby.
Bobby.
Yeah.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Madam Chair, and so the record should reflect that as to both those items, the public hearing was deemed to have been opened and closed without public comment.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote separately now on the consent agenda?
Okay, on the consent items, a member of the Commission or the public may ask that any item must be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommendation, recommended actions. Do I have?
I'll move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair. Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
And Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes. So now we're at item six. It's a short-term rental permit renewal at 1243 Stockton Street.
And Chair, I'll need to recuse because I'm a short-term permit holder.
Okay. May I have a staff report, please?
Sure, one moment. Do I need to wait? Okay. Thanks, thank you Chair Kissner.
I'm actually going to interrupt you really fast just to clarify. So item seven, the Spring Mountain Road and the Fulton Lane were approved by the consent calendar, so
That's correct.
if you're in the audience waiting for them, you've been approved, you're good to go home. I saw him chilling and not getting up and leaving.
Good call.
You're welcome. Short-term rental's going to be a while, so.
I didn't see them sitting there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you Chair Kissner. The applicant received their short-term rental permit on July 31st, 2012, and was subsequently renewed for two years in 2014. The applicant's current short-term rental permit expired on July 31st, 2016. As required by the ordinance, the applicant submitted a permit renewal application 30 days prior to the permit expiring. As required by the renewal process, staff checked with both the Finance Department and the Police Department in order to ensure that the applicant had properly been reporting and paying TOT payments and that they have fewer than three short-term rental-related complaints filed over the two years of the permit. The short-term rental permit renewal process requires the renewal to be referred to the Planning Commission for action at a public hearing should either of those provisions not be met. According to the Finance Department, the applicant failed to remit one TOT form in the last fiscal year, which is not uncommon among permit holders as the monthly reporting requirements is sometimes overlooked. The Planning Department is actively working with the Finance Department to ensure that all permit holders are aware of these reporting requirements. The reason for this application being before the Planning Commission is that according to the Police Department, there have been six calls to the police since April 2015 related to this address. Of these three were neighbor complaints about short-term rentals. However, short-term renters were only involved in one of the calls regarding on-street parking and noise problems. Staff received both letters and support, support and opposition to this application, and they have been included in the packet. One letter of support was received after the agenda packets were distributed and has been placed on the dais for the Commission and on the back table for the public. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the information presented in the staff report and at the public hearing this evening and find that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA and accept or reject the required findings and approve or deny the proposed short-term rental permit renewal for 1243 Stockton Street. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. First, you say that there were not three complaints to the Police Department, and then I hear that there were, not quite clear on.
Not all of them were related to actual short-term renters being on the property, if you look at the chart?
Yes, but is that one of the rule that it has to be related to the short-term renters?
There were three out of the six, three were short-term rental-related.
So there were three short-term?
There were. One was involving renters.
One was involving what?
Renters, the actual renters of the property.
Right, yes, so I don't know that there is a, was there a stipulation that the three that were reported to the police had to be of a certain kind? Or does that, because you say at one point that there weren't three?
Not at all. Even if there were fewer than that, if we felt there was a need to refer to the Planning Commission, we could do so. In this case, it did meet the requirement of three calls related, correct?
Thank you.
Dear members of this committee and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Podesta. As you may or may not be aware, my wife Brenda appeared here before the members of this Planning Department on August 2nd, 2016 to address any and all of your questions or concerns regarding our short-term rental permit. It should be known that 1243 Stockton Street is our primary residence, and we rent it very, very little, okay? At that primary and only residence located at 1243 Stockton Street, at that time, however, she was too distraught over the loss of my father, who had just passed away and was unable to contain herself here to be able to make this presentation to this committee, okay? Nevertheless, had she felt comfortable enough to address you and the folks that may, or may say, my permit, she would have provided you with the following information. The following facts support the renewal of my short-term rental permit, number 2012-31, issued on July 23rd of 2012. My wife and I have made St. Helena our home and primary residence since 2006. I am a member in good standing of both the St. Helena Chapter of International Order of Odd Fellows and also a member at Meadowwood Country Club. When we do on occasion choose to rent our home, we strictly follow and abide by St. Helena Municipal Code, Section 17-134-04, and our own personal house policy, which are quite a bit more strict than yours. My permit is issued in my name, and I am the owner of 1243 Stockton Street. My home has four bedrooms, and we never allow more than eight persons to stay in our home. I can attest that all applicable building, health, fire, and related safety codes are met and followed. Additionally, I have off-street parking at my house that can accommodate at least eight cars. Rarely, however, are there more than two vehicles parked at my house when we are renting. We prefer not to rent people, to people from California. We do this to avoid the possibility of unknown friends, of guests, showing up. Needless to say, on occasion, we have also allowed residents of St. Helena to rent our home on a short-term rental basis. As you know, the Fire Department has inspected and determined my house to be in compliance as well. All the necessary onsite contract information has been made available to you and to the public. To our house rules, quiet hours are maintained from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I forbid those, I forbid the use of amplified music audible to our neighbors, and we only rent to couples that are over 50 years old. I don't allow renters to have additional guests, group gatherings, pets of any kind. Toward that end, I screen any potential rentals thoroughly before they are allowed to stay in my home. Any Committee members who have seen my house know how particular, totally finished, and brilliant I maintain the home. Regarding the July 29th, 2016 letter typed and only signed by anonymous, I don't believe that this should be considered as credible. Personally, I don't know who anonymous is, and as such, have no ability to address such anonymous hearsay. The neighbors at 1219 Stockton Street, Anna Canales and Bruce Streblow, prepared a positive supporting letter on August 2nd of 2016. Additionally, the neighbor at 1240, Rick Garber, prepared a positive letter on August 2nd, 2016. Most recently, on August 31st, Diana Isdahl also wrote a very supportive and accurate letter in support of my application. Over 23 downtown businesses have submitted written letters of support, which I have made available here today for your perusal and anyone else that may want to read them. Of the 50 or so neighbors notified of my permit renewal, only four have apparently sent in written comments, to my knowledge. Of the four, one was anonymous, two were positive, and one was not based on accurate facts and does not, and the person does not even own the home. She herself is a renter. Of the six calls apparently made to the police on April 24th, 2015, to April 22nd, 2016, only one involved someone that was renting the home. Other complaints were two different neighbors that called the police all the time for any reason. The bottom line, however, is that approximately 2% of the 50 neighbors notified have responded, and the majority have been very supportive. As full-time residents of St. Helena with deep ties to this community, my wife and I value the sanctity and peace of our neighborhood. We have made every effort to satisfy our neighbors and departments concerned regarding laws pertaining to short-term rentals. Quite frankly, the only reason I occasionally rent my house was to pay for a recent kidney transplant, which I had four years ago, which affected my ability to be able to make the income that I was used to making. And money, there's a lot of money that's kept for those anti-rejection drugs to keep me alive. Recently, we have purchased security cameras that are going to be installed around the property where we can view in real time the street, the backyard, the driveway, and the premise itself as an added measure to maintain the sanctity and security of our home and this neighborhood. I respectfully request that the Planning Department renew our permit in accordance with the, and pursuant to Section 17 of the Municipal Code, as all of the conditions required have been satisfied. I thank you for your time and your consideration. Erin, do you want these to be made available? And Mr. Heacock has a much more, this is an abbreviated letter that I'm writing you, so he has a much more detailed package.
I have a question. Mr. Podesta?
Yes.
Can you tell me, do you know the nature of the complaint that was issued on April 1st that did involve the renters? Are you familiar with that situation?
Brendan, do you know? Oh, it was a parking.
On the street?
Yeah, somebody parked in the street. We put up signs in our house saying, "Please park in the driveway." Sometimes, you know, you can't control everybody, and that's the reason for the security cameras that are in real time. If I get a call from any of my neighbors, I can look at it, be able to contact the guest, and say, "You're parking on the street, please park in the driveway."
Okay, it also mentions ongoing noise problems. Are you aware of that with this specific complaint?
We've had problems with a couple of our neighbors. We get along very well with some, and some we don't. I had to file a restraining order from, against one of my neighbors, and we went to mediation about it. I'm not allowed to speak illie of him, and he's not allowed to speak illie of me, and that's including in the package that Mr. Heacock has as well, so.
And you said you occasionally rent your home? How often do you?
I think last year we had maybe 60 days.
60 days, okay.
Approximately.
Thank you.
My parents are both elderly, oh, my one mother now, and lives in Reno, so when we rent the house, we go up to Reno and take care of my parents, and now it's just my mom.
I have a question. When you, when you say 60 days, are most of those, you know, two-day weekends? So that would be 32-day weekends?
No.
Or are they, how, what are they like?
No, we, what's our, what's our minimum, is four days? Yeah, and we've had several 30-day, over 30-day rentals that people have just kept coming back and renting out. We've got the same family that's rented all of August for, I guess, what, three years?
But the 60 days, does the 60 days that you're?
No, that did not include that.
Does not include that, so are most of those, you say you have a minimum of four?
Four-day rentals to a week.
To a week, okay, all right, thanks, so that's
Sure.
About 15 weekends, 15 to 20 weekends a year we're talking?
You know, a lot of these people, they come and it's, they're not on a weekend. They'll come during the week, they come.
Okay, but, okay, but.
Yes.
15 to 20 weeks are effective, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions?
Hi, my name's Mary Kishani, and I live at 1230 Stockton Street, which is almost across the street to the Podesta's. You know, we've, we moved to St. Helena almost 25 years ago to raise our kids, and we came here for the community atmosphere and just a great neighborhood. Since the Podesta's have moved in, they illegally were renting the house for approximately four years, and we had made complaints, but nothing could be done, I mean, or nothing was done. They finally did get their license, and I just want to say, Mr. Podesta has made an effort, I know that, they said they put up signs in their house, but they're gone. We're the ones that have to deal with 2:00 in the morning screeching, laughing. People, when they come to the Valley, they come here to have fun and to party. So we are left with what, with the renters partying, making noise. I mean, we've had, my husband and I, because they, and the Podesta's did make a rule, but people still do go out on the porch, and it's like sexually inappropriate comments are being made, and they're, it's terrible. And I don't think that we should have to put up with it. My grandsons have been, my grandsons tend to spend the night on the weekends with my daughter, and they're woken up due to the disturbance. Like right now, let's just say that in another room, someone was making a lot of noise, and you could basically hear the conversation. Wouldn't you go there and say, "This is a place of business, please, you know, quiet down so we can continue"? Well, that's the way I feel. Ours is a neighborhood. It's not a hotel, it's not a motel. And I think that this permit is infringing on our rights to live in a peaceful community. This is pitted neighbor after, against neighbor. There's so much tension on the street, you can't believe. And like Mr. Podesta stated, there is a restraining order in effect where I cannot speak ill to, about them. I'm just talking. Okay, well, could you mind if I, I was listening while you were speaking? So basically, all I'm saying is, the Podesta's are not there. The last rental, which was, I think, last week, they, they moved in across the street because the, the person across the street is, he lives like in South Carolina or somewhere. So he comes maybe every four months. And so it's happened numerous, not even a little, numerous times that the Podesta's, you see them bringing all their clothes. So we not only deal with the Podesta's next door, we're dealing with the commotion on the street. I have to say that this time that the people did come and rent, they were quiet. But I just want to say that I feel like, I raised my kids there, I raised my grandkids there, and I don't want to have to deal with strangers that are there. I don't know if they're child molesters, I don't know who they've rented to. And every time they come out of their house, they approach us, and they want to talk to us and, you know, get to know us. And it's like, I'm not in the business of that. I want to live in my neighborhood peacefully. Thank you.
Good evening. Toni Kavalkovic, 1565 Pine Street, St. Helena, I've lived here for 62 years. I had no intention of speaking this evening, but Mr. Podesta said something that was disheartening to me. I think with the city, with our budgetary issues, for him to casually disregard phone calls to the Police Department, that, you know, they're just calling willy-nilly, I don't think that's the case. I know that I fought last year against 1450 Stockton. It was denied. I think this permit should be denied for all the same reasons, and we certainly don't need to revisit that. But that, the comment about the calls to the police, I think they are very valid. And if Mr. Podesta says that they don't rent the house that often, then are the six phone calls far more important than they would be if they rented all the time? I think it gives them more validity when it's being rented less. And one last comment I'd like to make, I find this list fascinating about the support for the Podesta's, and I totally get it. We all go around the neighborhood and we, we get the support we can. And I personally am here this evening because of Joni McQuitty. I think that, that her rights are being violated, and I see it, and I hear about it, and I'm upset. I think it's unfortunate that everyone on this list is someone who stands to profit from a short-term renter. from a short-term renter. And, as I've said before in my, my spiel last year, I do everything I can to shop here in this town, I pay taxes in this town, I am a citizen of this town, and I think you do this, the neighbors and the citizens a disservice when you've denied 1450 Stockton and it's just a block away, that you would sanction this permit with the complaints that have been stated with the police department, and the fact that the list is everyone who could profit off of someone coming into town for the weekend. And I thank you for your time.
I'm 1708 Main Street. I'm not a neighbor of, of the area there, but I've spoken to you before on behalf of my unhappiness with short-term rentals, as I live next to one. And, and I have suffered what the neighbors are suffering. Again, as Tona mentioned, our calls to the police department are legit. I am, you know, I'm all for people having a good time, I want them to enjoy our valley, I've been here my whole life, of course, we want to have a good feeling in that. But when they're, you know, on a Wednesday night at two in the morning, drunk as skunks, I've played tapes for you of my bedroom and the noise in my bedroom, and so I feel for the neighbors, I feel for what Mary was saying. I know how it is to live next to this, and it completely changes your way of life, it also changes your community and your neighborhood. We're losing our neighborhoods in St. Helena. Down the street from me now, they all are supposedly thirty-day rentals. I have no neighbors anymore. And it's very sad. We used to have get-togethers and do things, and we were such a great community. My son grew up in that, that neighborhood. So, I too, I believe in rules, and I believe in the short-term rental ordinance. The ordinance says that if there is a complaint, I know that's been adjusted now, that the permit would be denied. I think we have to stick with our ordinance and do what our ordinance says, otherwise why do we have an ordinance at all? And like I've said many times, what's been allowed is a Hilton next to me with nobody on staff, and that's exactly what's happened in these cases. And, you know, I'm sure they have people that can, that are, can easily get there when there's a complaint or whatever, but it still doesn't, you know, we wait, I'll wait three and four hours of listening to this noise and screaming and drunkenness before I call the police. So I think, again, schluffing off that people call the police just because, you know, a fly is in the air is, is not the case. We're very serious, it affects our lives, and I request that you deny this permit based on the complaints that they've had and the ordinance in regards to the complaints. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amir Kishani. I live on 1230 Stockton Street. I lived there the last twenty-five years, and Mr. Podesta's house and our house, the distance, I'm a structural engineer, I built houses, so I can kind of give you the feeling of how I feel when I lived there and we heard the noise. The distance to the house, our house porch, is from there to there, seventy feet. Okay? So what is happening is, when at ten-thirty at night, people leave their door open, even they're having a good time, they're renting the place, they love the place, they're there to have fun. They're drinking, they're having a party, they're talking nonsense, bad words, whatever, we can hear. We're, we're right into it. We can't sleep. Summertime is for everybody. It's not just for you, it's not just for me, it's for everybody. So they leave their door open, we leave our door open. So what is happening is, we hear that noise constantly, and.
Would you, would you wait your turn, please?
He's not allowed to speak, he's under court order, he's a good tenant in court right now. I just want the committee to know that. It doesn't matter. You can provide the restraining order.
Here's the attorney.
Tom.
And he, he wasn't supposed to talk to.
Wait a minute.
He's under restraining order.
So, the restraining order is not for this council, for this commission to enforce?
So he can't speak.
So the gentleman can speak if he's in violation of it, they have their remedies in court.
That's right.
Okay. Continue.
Okay. So, we leave, we leave, I don't know where I was, so let me think about it a little bit.
You're saying summer is for everyone?
Oh, summer is for everyone, for you, for me, for everybody. So what is happening is, from Thursday, every, we, we see the house from, I'll tell you from Monday. From Monday, you see all the cleaning ladies, the appliance people, the carpet cleaner, everybody come from Monday through Thursday. All park in the front of the house, or inside, you can hear the landscape or everything. From Thursday to Sunday, you see a group of people between six to eight, I don't know, I can't count them, maybe more, they're showing up. So every Thursday that I want to have vacation, I want to have peace, have a weekend, I have a renter, new renter, that I don't know if they're rapists, I don't know if they're our gentlemen, I don't even know if they're running for presidency, I don't know who they are. They come over, they talk to me, I, I try to be polite, talk back, back to them. There's a lot of stuff going on in there. And my whole point is to you is, we have a lot of problem with this rental. The place is too close for fire reason. Their house and next-door house is ten feet away from each other. So if there's a renter, there, you know, some, some fire happened, you don't have the adequate fire thing to take care of it. The fire department doesn't have it. This is not a commercial building. This is a residential building. You don't have the sprinkler system, you don't have the handicap system, you don't have anything. And the distance for us, that's the whole situation that we have right now. So what I'm asking you, if you don't mind to revoke his license, because he's been doing it illegally for the last, from ten years ago. So, four, five years of it was illegal, and then they made him to be legal. I don't understand that. You know, when you go through a red light, you get a ticket. He got, he got a license. Instead of looking at this situation, I talked to Greg before, he said they can't do anything about it, so what I'm asking is, why don't you take a look at his application and review his stuff, and make sure that he's doing the right thing? That's all I'm asking. And revoke his license until he brings you the right, I mean, he can control parking spot, the noise, the, fighting with the neighbors, trying to harass people, you got to stop all that. So I appreciate your time, thank you so much, and we hope that you think about this one. And I'm keeping the city of St. Helena responsible. If anything happened to my family, to my car, my daughters, my, my whole family, just because you give this guy a license, we're, we're in trouble. I don't want to get involved with the whole situation, but it's bringing us hard time. And this guy should be ashamed of himself. So I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
My name is Douglas Lynn. I live at 1440 Stockton. I believe every member of the commission received a letter, and the planning director did as well, signed by ten of the residents of the street. Bringing your attention back to all of the items that were discussed in the case on 1450 Stockton, all of which are exactly the same for this situation. There's no point in my going over them one at a time. You've voted on them before, you voted properly, you turned down the other permit. We would like to see short-term rentals restricted on all of Stockton Street. It's a narrow street, we've got a lot of kids, we don't have enough parking, and two cars passing, two good-sized pickup trucks are very careful. It's like going over the bridge over the trail. As far as the personalities and things that are going on here, I know nothing about them, and they have nothing to do with what we're here to discuss. It's whether or not the zoning is proper. Any permit of that type is proper on Stockton Street. The lots are small, we have a lot of kids, and it's a neighborhood. It's not, if I was buying the house today and knew I was at risk of living next to a motel, which is what we're talking about here, I probably wouldn't have bought the house. And on top of that, within a block to the east of us, we have two schools, so the kids cross the intersections on Stockton every single day. More traffic on that street is not helpful, and it's not safe. But, that's all I have. Thank you.
My name is Michael McQuitty. I am the son of the neighbor to the Podesta's. I do not live in the neighborhood, but I'm there quite often, visiting my mom and helping her out. I agree with the comments that the previous gentleman just made as far as the issues that were presented as far as following the regulations of short-term rentals and an earlier decision that was made, which is, is very similar and can easily be, you know, applied to the local area. Just one other comment. The, the term renting their house occasionally, when the timeframe was brought up as far as how often is occasionally, that's fifteen to twenty weekends a year? I don't really consider that occasionally, and it really turns out to be, you know, living in a neighborhood where there's a hotel, which is a business, and this is a residential neighborhood with families. Is that the right business in the right neighborhood? I think it's just the opposite. One more point. His permit expired on July 31st. I would like to hear comment from Mr. Podesta on who the renters were there since July 31st, who moved out yesterday. Thank you very much.
Close public comment? Sorry.
Someone left their glasses. Hi, my name is John Morgan. I'm, I'm a friend of Steve Podesta's, and, and in such a hearing, I know that sometimes people get very emotional. We've heard about, quote, "rapists" and "presidents" and things like that, which has nothing to do with the issuance of this permit. Quite frankly, the law was passed, so you're stuck with the law. That's the municipal code that we're dealing with here, and, and although people have made comments about having a, quote-unquote, "hotel" being run, that's simply not the case. Statements here made today are not backed up with any facts whatsoever. However, the committee, I believe, has received several documents and, and, and very credible evidence as to what really is going on at the Podesta household. And my understanding is that everything that they've done is, is within accordance with the law that everyone here voted for. So, as far as some of the nasty comments that were made tonight, I, I really don't think it's very beneficial for anyone to even consider that, quite frankly. I, I think that obviously there's no rapists living in the neighborhood, and if you want to talk about cars parked on, on Stockton Street, then, you know, it's my understanding that Mr. Kishani has three or four that are parked there constantly, and they're, the hoods are up, and, and the wax is going, and, and the oil's being put in, so. But the bottom line here is that this permit is legal, and everything that they've done is legal, and to deny the renewal of that permit is illegal, under the municipal code and the Constitution of the United States. And I would strongly encourage this committee to renew it. Thank you.
I'm a little hard of hearing. Can you all hear me? Because I've had trouble hearing a lot of this that's been going on. I'm the elephant in the room. I am Joni McQuitty, and I live at, would you please put the other plot, plan thing up? The one that has the houses lined up? Better than that, the, the, the other one. Okay. Just make it larger. Push it up, please. Sorry. All right. I live at 1227 Stockton Street. Can you go back to the drawing? And raise it up? All right. I live at 1227 Stockton Street, which is right below the red line, outline of the Podesta's home. I bought it in 2000, so there were other people living in Mr. Podesta's house when I bought it. Things have changed considerably. I did not expect a lot of what has happened, but I have been trying to roll with it. I wasn't going to speak today, but my son in Oregon told me, Mom, you're eighty-five years old now, you can say anything you want. So I have decided, I do not have anything personal against the Podesta's. I am not here to talk about personalities, other than to say that in every block, in every street in this town, there are going to be many different personalities on any one block. And so we have that on our block. And when you are as close as we are, I have a forty-two-foot wide lot. My kitchen doors are the required ten-foot setback. The house next door that the Podesta's bought in, I think it was 2006, is ten foot away. I did not know that bedroom windows were going to be turned into a door and a stoop. I did not take into account, my fault, that the house the Podesta's bought is half a flight higher than mine. Therefore, a six or an eight-foot fence doesn't cut it. They come out that side stoop, my time is up. They come out that side stoop, whoever it is, and they look right down on me, unless I do what Mr. Podesta in the past suggested to me to do, which was to pull my drapes if I didn't like people looking in at me. That gave me some pause. So I do that. As far as the neighborhood is concerned, and I'll cut short my comments, there was a character to the neighborhood when I moved in. I understand that the short-term rentals are not supposed to change too much the character of the neighborhood. Having a short-term rental has clearly changed everything. I kept my mouth shut for ten years because I have not been a complainer. When the Podesta's moved in, they called me the goddess, and I tried very hard to live up to that and to be as good a neighbor as I could. I will not carry that individual situation any further than to say that. However, things have changed, and I have also gotten a small dog that barks once in a while, and I know that that has. And I know that that has not set well, but that's beside the point. My point is that a short-term rental there is the wrong business in the wrong place. I do not understand this, this really gave me pause, I just saw it tonight for the first time. I think it is wonderful that Mr. Podesta has all these friends in good places. I wish I did, I don't. But, I don't know whether to be for or against this. And I think that you have a horrible, horrible choice to make. I think that there are many reasons to have an STR in this town, but I think that what didn't happen in this case was that when it first was brought into our neighborhood, I don't recall neighbors being consulted, asked if anybody liked the idea. And, until the permit was given, it was done illegally. Although, there were things that I was told that made me question that. So, I'm between a rock and a hard place, folks. I don't know anything other than to say that if Mr. Podesta could move that somewhere else, I'd be all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Close public hearing? No, I have a question.
Madam Chair, it would be appropriate to invite the applicant to submit any final statements or rebuttal.
Would you like to make final statement?
I don't want to say anything bad about my neighbor Joni McQuitty. She's a nice lady. From the time that I moved in, I tried to comply with everything that she asked. I had a garden that had a large tree, and she had a problem backing out, she asked me to remove it, I did. She... I'm sorry, am I being out of line here? You know, I just complimented you, I don't know what else to say. But with respect to what she was talking about, where my stoop is and where it was, that's the way it's been since I bought it. And she got notice of the rental permits, like everybody else, within that three-hundred-foot diameter. So to say that she didn't know it was happening, is just not accurate. So, I wish her the best, I try to, I try to be friendly, you know. I complained to her once about her dog, and she went to the police department and complained that I complained. I don't know what to do.
Madam Chair, out of fairness to the applicant, we need to have one speaker talking at a time. And speakers need to speak at the dais.
Would you please sit down, Ms. McQuitty? Are you finished? Thank you. I have a question. The ordinance, I think, if I remember correctly, called for someone to be within a certain timeframe from the house when it's rented? And I don't think that that, him being in Reno, would fit that in the ordinance, is that correct?
The ordinance does have a requirement that there be a caregiver or someone's able to respond to complaints that occur at the property, and they have to be designated in the information provided as to what their contact...
Do we have that information?
We do have the information currently, and it's on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Are we asking questions?
Yes.
I have a question, what, was there permission, I mean, if the permit has expired and there have been rentals since then, was there permission to do that?
When discretionary applications are under review, especially given that this item was actually continued from a previous meeting, you'll remember, staff does not consider the approval to have been stayed, given that they filed their application during the timeframe within the, prior to it expiring, the application was filed. We were reviewing the project, it took us time to get it before you, so those rental activities would not be considered illegal by staff. And the city attorney can file or comment if they need to.
This would be a matter that would be within the reasonable interpretation of your planning director.
I understand that for the first, but, the second continuance was of the request of the applicant, does that make a difference?
Again, if an application is filed to address a pending expiration, staff does not consider that expiration to have occurred until action on the application that was filed.
Any questions? Commissioner Parker, you have any questions?
No.
All right, would someone like to start?
I'll go. Well, I do appreciate that short-term rentals are difficult and they are moneymakers. I have a, I'm going to reiterate my concerns with it being on Stockton Street, as I did with the previous, down at 1450, I think that's Stockton Street, given it's a one-way, well, one-way parking, very narrow, there are a lot of local families that do live on it. I can give you the findings that I circled. Where are they, where's my resolution? But I'm just going to reiterate the same from our previous, yeah, it was 1450, just the setbacks, narrow lots, it doesn't fit with the character, and I'm concerned for public's health and safety, and for real findings resolutions, two C, it's not compatible, and it's detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. It's really because it's a one-way street. It's, or not, sorry, one-way parking in a very narrow street, I just don't think it's safe. Also, very concerned with the noise, and I understand there's only one call that was based on noise for the police, but it does sound like there were other issues that just the police weren't called, that is concerning. I do appreciate the signs, I think that that's great, I just, there's, I agree with Ms. McQuitty that it's just the wrong business in the wrong place, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
I agree with what Commissioner Parker has said. To me, the issue here is not so much the complaints, because for the most part, they don't relate to the short-term rental. And neighbors without a short-term rental can have arguments with each other and have uncomfortable situations, which seems to be part of the issue here. But to me, it is the precedent of the previous denial, the narrow street, the parking. Not every neighborhood in San Luis is the appropriate place to insert this kind of more commercial use. We all like TOT revenue, but I think in this case, the neighborhood conditions outweigh it, and I'm certain there are other people on the waiting list who will apply for and possibly obtain permits. I also note that, were we to deny this, it doesn't prohibit Mr. Podesta, I believe, from coming back after some pause and reapplying, if there's a change in circumstances, but I sort of doubt that, based on the neighborhood character. I don't think the neighborhood character is going to change. So, I agree with Commissioner Parker, I think this is a case where it's difficult to find that standard number three is being met, which is that the establishment is compatible with and will not be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood and surrounding land uses. I think this neighborhood is too compact and the street is too narrow to inject this kind of use there.
Well, I agree with both Commissioners Culberstein and Parker. And in addition, I do take to heart the complaints of the neighbors. I think that's important to me. And I think that the formal complaints to the police department is what is written in the ordinance, but I think in our discretionary role here, that the, the character of the neighborhood as reflected in the contentiousness and the, and the passion and the heartache of the people who have spoken, does need to be considered. And I do consider that as a reasonable basis to not renew this, this short-term rental application. And, thank you. And, ah, I was going to say something else. Maybe I'll think of it. Okay, I might think of it.
I'm sure it was thoughtful.
If, after Chair...
My name's Kissner.
Kissner speaks, and I think of it, I will bring it back, because I wanted to say it, whatever. All right, thanks.
Well, I agree with my federal, with my Commissioners, that this probably is not the place to be having one of these. I do, however, would like to say that we have passed, and the council has passed the short-term rental, and that if it's an appropriate area, I don't think that we should revisit the short-term rental every time we have an argument over whether we should have one in a particular neighborhood or not. I don't think that I would take that into any consideration. However, I agree with my fellow Commissioners on this one, and I would vote to deny this one at this point.
I remember I wanted to say, in response to a comment that was made, that because there's an ordinance, and that rules have been followed, it's illegal not to grant the application. I think that this is a discretionary matter, and that it is at the discretion of the Planning Commission to have a, you know, to make a decision that is not necessarily just in lockstep with a black and white, the ordinance says, he's followed all the rules, so therefore it has to be renewed. I just wanted to rebut that comment.
I would just like to add one thing. There are two other short-term rentals very close by in the neighborhood on Tainter, which was an issue to me when we discussed the ordinance in general, to try not to cluster them in a particular area. And this is a neighborhood of small lots, and, you know, for the reasons we mentioned before on Stockton, I think it's an issue here, but to me, it's also the fact that there are two others operating not far away.
And I kind of have a question. I recall in the past that someone said that then we'll just have thirty-day rentals. Can you remind me of what the ordinance says, if, you know, people rent for thirty days, and that's done as an end run around the short-term rental? Is there anything in our code that addresses that?
Rentals for thirty-day or more is a permitted land use.
I understand that, but if there are rentals that are advertised for thirty days, and it turns out that they're for less, is there any, is there any way to address that?
Well, that would be a violation of the ordinance, because it's not about what the advertisement of the activity is, it's what the actual activity is.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Someone like to make a motion?
What's the language? Just make a motion to deny the application, is that the, pardon, as amended? I make a motion to deny the application as amended.
Before the commission votes, may I suggest that the motion incorporate the comments of commission members here, that your findings be adopted, and those findings reflect the comments of all of the Commissioners who have spoken this evening. That would be appropriate.
That.
I would also, if I could just make one other point. The last point in the resolution presented in the staff report should be deleted. The indemnity provision is not appropriate for a denial.
You mean under the recommendations, Tom? Under the recommendations?
In what I believe was the draft... In voting to, the commission in voting to disapprove the application, needs to adopt a set of findings for denial. There was a set of findings for denial in your packet this evening, that, those findings should do two things. One, you should include a provision in those findings incorporating the comments of each of the Commissioners this evening. And in addition, the indemnity condition that is in that draft, set of findings for denial, should be omitted. That's not appropriate for a denial.
That's number three. Number three.
Yes.
So, I would like to make that motion incorporating what Mr. Brown has just elucidated.
With the findings as amended.
You okay? All right. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Culberstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair, and Chair Park, Kissner?
Yes, again.
Sarah Kissner, how's that?
I'll go with that.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Chair Kissner. Item nine, as identified in the agenda for tonight's meeting, is an update on the Hunter subdivision EIR. The last update was provided to the commission, which indicated an admin draft would be coming out in early summer. Obviously, that did not occur. The commission asked staff to bring the planning consultant, who's being represented by Carla Violet here, Urban Planning Partners, to ask for an update on the status of that EIR. There were some staff issues internally to the department, in addition to some of the things Ms. Violet will be talking about, which affected the schedule. However, an updated schedule has been provided, it's available to the Planning Commission on the dais, as available to the public in the rear of the room, and the agenda will be amended to include that information. However, Ms. Violet is here to present.
Good evening, thank you for having me back. It's been a little bit of time, and appreciate having the opportunity to come back before you all today. As Noah explained, I was here in March with an updated schedule. Since then, there were some, unfortunately, some delays in city review.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
I'm sorry, Carla Violet.
Carla, thank you.
Yes, with Urban Planning Partners. So we had received comments back from the city in both April and July of this year, and since then, it has taken our team about six weeks longer than we had hoped in order to get a screen check draft back to you all to review. That's been for a few different reasons, just not knowing exactly when we would be receiving comments and having to allocate staff, and some difficulties with summer vacations. August is a challenging month, both for our staff and for our subconsultants. And there were also some staff changes on our team that caused some of this delay. According to the schedule that we've outlined here, we are committed to getting a screen check draft to the city this According to the schedule that we've outlined here, we are committed to getting a screen check draft to the city this week. Um, we also know that the city is on board with this schedule as well, to make sure that we keep things moving forward quickly. Um, so getting a screen check draft to you all this week, and then having a few weeks for some back and forth to review that draft, and make sure any additional edits are addressed, and then having a public review draft next month in October. So, that is what we are anticipating and hoping to get done, so, thank you. If there's any questions, I'm here.
And I would just like to add, Ms. Violet was very gracious. Some of this, the additional time, it was just, uh, frankly, city staff, um, trying to juggle a lot of priorities with limited numbers of folks who, who were able to review the documents, get them their comments, and get back, uh, on the document themselves for them to incorporate. So she was very gracious. I want to take some ownership over the delay as well, just given the amount of work that's in the department right now, especially, uh, through the early and mid-summer time period, it all kind of came together and was challenging. However, uh, we are committed to providing comments back to them. We expect to get a draft, as she mentioned, um, the end of this week. Early next week, we'll review that for two weeks, provide any last-minute comments on the screen check draft. That'll be returned to them. They take a little bit of time to make sure that those get incorporated into it, and then the document is published for a forty-five day public review and comment period.
So just for the benefit of the people who are here, could you kind of run through what those actual dates are on your schedule?
Yeah, so as mentioned, uh, the, there's a schedule in the back, it's provided, and it will be, uh, uploaded to the, this agenda package. But essentially, uh, the consultant is expecting to get a draft to the city.
This Friday?
Yeah, September ninth.
This Friday, okay, and then, uh, we will get our comments back to Ms. Violet and Urban Planning Partners within two weeks, uh, on the twenty-third of, of September, and then they expect to be able to turn around final print, uh, going to the, uh, State Clearing House on October twenty-first. So there's a little bit of flexibility built into that, as, you know, people get sick, we might slip a little bit, or they might slip a little bit in being able to meet all those dates. But, uh, we are anticipating being able to meet the schedule that's provided here, with the closing of that comment period occurring in early December. The date on this is December fifth.
When, um, does, uh, does, uh, the public, um, review draft will be done on October twenty-first, though? And that will come to us, or not?
No, that's published for, for the public review and comment. So what's brought back before the planning commission is after the review and comment period closes, staff takes all of the public comments received on the document, summarizes them, uh, provides responses to all those comments, which will take a substantial amount of time. And then what's brought back before the commission is the final EIR, which includes the environmental analysis itself, all of the comments received on the document, and then all of the responses prepared.
And you're looking at December fifth for that? Is that accurate? No.
No.
You're looking at October?
That's when the review period ends. So that's when staff begins the response time.
Ah, okay, so we, that's when you, you begin your response time to, to, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
It will be public, that's correct.
By December fif-
Yes, you're with October twenty-first.
October twenty-first, all right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, October twenty-first, we're anticipating providing a copy to both the planning commission, the city council, and all the citizens of the community. Um, and then we'll be having conversations, obviously, with regards to the comment period. And then the, that will end in early December, at which time staff will begin preparing responses to those comments.
Thank you.
Is, uh, was there a reason we didn't get a staff report for that?
Well, it was a status update, so there wasn't a lot beyond the schedule to present.
Okay.
And, uh, the schedule took a little longer than staff anticipated to be able to provide to the commission, so there was not a lot to comment on specifically in writing in the staff.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
All right, the next item is, uh, the commission requested comments and direction concerning a property owner request to redesignate all properties on Monte Vista Avenue from medium-density residential to high-density as a part of the city's general plan update process. This item was added to the agenda at the request of the planning commission.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. Um, as you mentioned, the item before you today is a review of properties on Monte Vista Avenue. Um, the current density of those properties is designated as medium-density residential. Uh, and a request was made, uh, the staff report says July nineteenth. It was pointed out to me that the request was actually made at the podium on August second by Mary Stevenson. Um, a, a member of the public commented on that. I have not reviewed that tape to confirm, but, uh, that's what was informed to me, so that may be a typo.
I did review the tape, and that's correct, it was eight-two.
Thank you. So August second was the date, the, the statement was made here in person at the podium. However, Ms. Stevenson has provided, um, numerous written comments to the commission and staff, uh, beginning at least in, um, early spring regarding concerns over density on Monte Vista. Um, and as the staff and the commission have kind of gotten through the review of the EIR, I'm sorry, the general plan itself, um, this item was not raised to the level of discussion until recently, when the commission requested staff put it on this agenda or the next available agenda. Um, specifically, there are eleven parcels located on Monte Vista Avenue. Uh, and Ms. Stevenson, who owns property there, pointed out that the current, um, medium-density designation, which allows a density of five, essentially five-point-one or five units per acre to sixteen units per acre, um, does not match the existing built density of the neighborhood, and requested the commission consider, um, recommending to the council an increase of that density to the high-density designation, which would allow sixteen-point-one to twenty-eight units per acre. This comment was made on August second, as mentioned, in person at the, at the, um, podium here, which was outside of the forty-five day EIR comment period. It's worth noting that comments on the general plan itself can come in at any time, and they're not limited to the EIR comment period. The EIR and the general plan are, are separate documents, and again, the general plan update process is not governed or limited by that forty-five day comment period. It's just worth noting. Um, so Monte Vista, this is a, a graphic prepared by staff. It's, uh, cul-de-sac access off of Hunt. Um, it's, as mentioned, eleven properties, all of which are developed with multifamily housing. It's a variety of, of construction types and unit types. Um, primarily built in the late sixties and early seventies, uh, so the buildings are forty to fifty years old. Um, this analysis ident- uh, identifies the year built, uh, for each of those, when that information is available. Some of the parcels along the eastern side, the assessor did not have the year-built information, uh, provided. So again, it's eleven parcels totaling about three-point-two-five acres, and there are currently seventy-five apartment units built on these. Uh, the density of the individual properties ranges from a low of pi- five-point-seven units per acre to a high of thirty-three units per acre, with the average being twenty-three units per acre, significantly over the medium-density designation of sixteen units an acre. Um, of the eleven properties, nine of them, which is approximately eighty-two percent, exceed the sixteen-unit-per-acre maximum density allowed by the medium-density designation. And this discrepancy was the minor just, or the major justification for, uh, why this request was made by the property owner. Um, all properties in the surrounding vicinity of this neighborhood are single-family homes, worth noting, and they're developed at approximately four to five units per acre. And their medium-density designation is similarly inconsistent, given that it's lower than the minimum range in the medium-density of five-point-one. The general plan, April two thousand sixteen draft general plan proposes to leave the medium-density designation on Monte Vista Avenue, uh, which is consistent with the nineteen-ninety-three plan. And so, uh, the staff report talks about some of the rationale for high-density as voiced. Um, basically, it's, it's a situation of accurately depicting how the properties are currently developed and addressing the potential for these properties, or the existing, uh, designation of these properties as what's called non-conforming. So they, the, what's currently built on site does not meet the development criteria, um, of the zoning code, specifically the density, as we've talked about. Um, there's a, a discussion in the staff report regarding the implications of existing non-conforming properties, and when they could or couldn't get rebuilt, if they were destroyed or damaged. Uh, there's also discussion about how that may or may not affect the ability for these properties to be renovated, um, given that if you do a, a renovation of the properties that is deemed to be in excess of fifty percent of the value of the structure, then you actually cannot do that. You're expected to redevelop it at the density or the requirements that are, uh, identified in the zoning code. Um, there's a discussion in the staff report also about other ways, um, that, or other implications that the commission should consider, one of which is that the density bonus allowances for, um, uh, affordable housing projects could allow this legal non-conforming properties to be redeveloped to the actual density levels, um, that they are built out now, if they received a density bonus. Um, there's also s- some discussion in the staff report regarding the fact that the council and commission, um, reviewed a proposal to allow multifamily housing as a permitted land use, so a by-right land use in the high-density zoning code, and that was approved in June of two thousand sixteen. Uh, essentially, if, if these properties were redesignated to high-density, it would, it would make design review the only entitlement required to redevelop them at those density levels, so that's worth consideration in, in this conversation. Um, and if they were designated high-density, the total number of units that would be built on the site is eighteen additional units. So it would go from what's currently built to ninety-one total units in the area, which is approximately a twenty-five percent increase. And then one further, uh, element to consider is the fact that, um, medium, or high-density allows up to thirty-five feet in height. So if you're allowed to then rebuild by right, you could, uh, in effect, go to three stories, where most of these buildings are all of them, uh, a majority of them are built at two stories, with a few of them built at one story. So those are the, the considerations staff has recommended the commission think about in, uh, their discussion of, of this, uh, request. And the recommendations that the commission discussed and provides staff direction regarding modifying the land use designation for the eleven properties on Monte Vista Avenue from medium-density residential to high-density residential. And it's worth noting that obviously, this will be a recommendation that goes to the city council for final review and action as a part of the general plan update.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that the by-right, that would happen if we, uh, if it were to be changed to high-density, would just be the twenty-eight units, correct? It would just, that would be the by-right point, that there would be twenty-eight units per acre?
That's right, so what would be, multifamily housing or apartments would be allowed by right?
But the design and the setbacks and everything, cause I know Bobby's gonna get into setbacks, would still be the same.
Well, unless there were some bonuses for, but.
Okay.
That's right, the design of the units would be under the discretion of the planning commission, through the design review process.
All right, and then bonuses would just be if it wa- if it qualified for low-income or s- low-low income? It wouldn't be regular market rate?
Market rate would not be able to m- get the density bonus.
Okay.
What percentage of the development would have to be affordable to get the, the dense, the bonus density?
I don't have an answer for that question right now, but I do have the code with me.
Okay, I want to ask, so, it, it sounds like we are considering this item. You said we could, anyone could do this, so we could get more, um, to agendize, um, now, and discuss, and then recommend to the city council that it be added to the general plan update. It seems that, and you're saying we can do that, but that just seems like it's outside. I know you said it's okay to be outside the comment period, but to have that process be taking place here kind of opens Pandora's box, doesn't it? Because there are other zoning issues that people have strong feelings about in this town, that they could bring to our meeting?
I'd like to answer that, Bobby. I, I, I think, in all truth and fairness, when Ms. Stevenson took this to, to the planning department in, in April, she did the same type of thing that the, uh, citizens' voices and Mr. David and his group did, and nobody paid any attention to her, and I think in all fairness, that we have to listen to what Ms. Stevenson has to say.
I think we should listen to it, but I think that from a process perspective, it's outside.
Uh, no, I, I thi- I think that we have the discretion to, to do this, and I think that we should do it in all honesty and fairness to Ms. Stevenson.
Well, other, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but there have other, there have been other people up here who, who were just as sincere, and were just as, um.
I think we listened to all the groups.
I'm, there have been other people about other zoning that have not been listened to, and about other issues that have not been listened to, that, that wanted, that they wanted to get into the general plan. So I just think it's a slippery slope, and I, that's all I'm saying. I don't.
Mary, would you like to comment?
Getting, getting to your question, uh, Ms. Monette. Um, so the, the number of concessions depends on the number of, or the percentage of units for very-low income, low-income, or moderate income for a condominium. So it's, it's somewhat of a sliding scale. So if you go up to thirty percent for low-income, then you can get three concessions or incentives. If you go up to fifteen for very-low, then you can get three concessions or incentives. But, uh, even providing just five percent very-low could get you one concession or incentive.
The concessions or incentives are setbacks, height restriction, density, okay, okay, thank you.
And could I ask two questions? Um, the first is, because of those concessions that are available, the zone, the definitive answer in the zoning is kind of moot, really. Because if you came and i- i- if she's, if Mary, which I think she is, is trying to support the, um, the ability to rebuild affordable housing in place of the affordable housing that's there today, if something, if they were to be destroyed or damaged, and, and have a, a safety net around that, the concessions do that already, correct?
The distinction is they would be required to be designated affordable units, which means they're under contract, and, and the city would be involved in administering to make sure they're actually affordable units. These units currently built are not restricted. Their market rate, they just happen to rent at below-market, um, costs. So that, these are not actually affordable units currently.
But the zoning wouldn't, the, the zoning wouldn't help that situation, because they could be rebuilt at current market rate, which would be higher than they are today. So to, to, I believe to accomplish what her intention is, the bonuses for legitimate affordable housing really supersede, from a safety net standpoint, rezoning this, right? Cause if we could rezone this, they could still be twenty-eight million-dollar homes, and it is not really what her intention is.
Sure, I, I think the issue is that, that, so, it's common, a fire, say a fire happened, and more than fifty percent of the structure was, was destroyed on one of these that's built. Uh, one of them is, um, very significantly over the allowable. That could not be rebuilt to that density level.
Right.
Without a concession being granted.
Right, right. But again, if her intention is, is bigger than simply like-for-like numbers of units, which I, I believe in our impression of her multiple visits to the planning commission, I, I think that we have to be careful, because simply just rezoning it doesn't, in fact, protect affordable housing.
It would in no way protect affordable housing, that's correct.
And so then my other question is, um, a- and I support what Mary's trying to do. I mean, I think that, and I, and again, I believe, I agree with Grace, that because her time, just because of timing, or because of the fact that maybe she, her voice wasn't loud enough at the time, that, I, I completely endorse, to talk about this now. However, just to be consistent, we didn't allow the idea of the new low-medium. Was it low-medium, I forget the title, you know, and said, no, too late in the game, we're not gonna do that now. And I just would like to understand how this is different from that process.
So one of the, uh, justifications behind the low-medium was also due to the non-conformity of most of the development in the community.
So how are they different? Because to me, they seem the same. I guess one's create, was creating a new zone. No, this is crea- this is the same, it was rezoning an existing zone. Well, I'm, I'm saying that the medium-low is a new zone that we never had before. We already have high, I, I'm just saying, that's, that's the one.
That is a distinction.
That's, it's a distinction. That would be a distinction, are there others?
Well, the, in this, I mean, maybe a counterpoint to that is that i- if this were changed to high-density, then it would bring in the by-right issue.
That's another, that's a excellent point, so, um, multifamily housing is allowed by right in high-density. The current designation would re- still require a use permit for multifamily housing.
Gotcha, okay.
Staff has not looked at any of these issues under the context of the low-medium idea.
All right.
So I'm not prepared to discuss.
But the by-right for multi-unit would be s- one unique feature. But again, it would still not have anything whatsoever to do with what types of multi-units are put on there. So there's no guarantee
That's correct.
a multi-unit would be anything but current market rate at the time.
That's correct. Uh, another senior planner, Heacock, just reminded me, another thing that wasn't injected into the analysis is the growth management, which only allows nine new units to be built per year. In this situation, the rebuilding idea, you could build what you had there. So if it was redesignated high-density, and you had those, you would be replacing all the units that were lost, so that wouldn't be an issue. However, if you then increased the number of units that were built on the property because you were granted the ability to build that through the increased density from the medium to the high, then the growth management would kick in, and the, the number of units that could be built in any one year would be looked at.
And I have a question. If we are, meet resistance on changing this right now because of the fact that we're not addressing the low-medium and this is kind of in that same vein, it is somewhat apples-to-apples. We could address changing it to high-density at our next housing element? That would be the next appropriate?
One hundred percent, or.
And, and that is when?
Yeah, it was, sorry, our last housing element was approved for eight years. But after, I mean, if the, if the general plan is adopted, a general plan amendment can be initiated at any time by private property owners or by the city.
All right.
And could this be considered an amendment to the current general plan? Although that's not really what she's asking for, but it could be considered.
That could be filed today.
Yeah.
It could.
I'm not suggesting that we do this. I'm suggesting that she gets the same opportunity.
Oh, yeah. No, and I don't, I'm not opposed, and I understand, I believe I, I shouldn't have put words in her mouth, but from all the correspondence and her various, multiple times that she's visited with us here at, at the commission, I think her intention is low, is, is affordable housing. And I'm not sure what we're asked to do today guarantees that. All it does is says you can put multiple units on this, at this location.
Well, I think we may need to make the same kind of recommendation to the council that we made on the low-density, whether, whether we agree with it or we don't, but I think the council is ultimately going to make the decision. And that's all I'm, I think we should do is send it on to the council
Yep.
and, and let her have, at least have her say.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I have a question for the staff. You know, it's hard to sometimes think about these general plan issues without looking at the zoning ordinance we have now. But after we finish the general plan, we will revise the zoning ordinance. Now, I understand we're obligated to keep the as-of-right provision in the high-density. But right now, our high-density district has no FAR limit. And it seems to me that's something that could go into the zoning revision, or there might be other changes made to the high-density district that would also be controlling the bulk of buildings on the property. Is that right?
That's one hundred percent accurate, and just, you just reminded me, another element that probably should have been identified in the staff report is the fact that we've committed to creating design guidelines for multifamily housing. I mean, we, we, we are going to do that. Again, it gets down to staff capacity, but that, that's one of our higher priorities along with the, you know, getting the general plan adopted and then looking at the zoning code.
Okay. And just one other fact, my, last time I looked at the map in our general plan, it shows this as low-medium district, which is an error, I believe.
I, I believe that's, there, there's been some issues with the, which graphics are online, and I apologize to the public and the commission for that. We have serious issues with the website and then also with the graphic individual. I will, and, and a member of the public also pointed out that there was a graphic that identified this as low-medium. I don't believe that was ever intended to be the case, but I will circle back with the commission and with the public to, to identify what the current general plan draft identifies this neighborhood for and all neighborhoods in Santa Helena and make sure it's completely accurate.
Okay, but I mean, what, what is the intention here, that this would be medium?
Medium, remain medium, that's correct.
We also received through our city email, and I don't know if it was here tonight, but my city email disappears within like two days after I get it. So I did not print it out, but we had a fairly extensive email from the applicant in this case. And if we are going to send this up to the council, I would like that to be included. I have a couple of comments on this. I, I tend to agree that we have, oh, you've got it.
We're asking questions.
Commission's still asking questions.
Oh. I, I was about to launch into discussion, so I'll stop asking questions.
Any more questions? Open public forum?
Good evening. I'm Vicky Bradshaw. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, David, and myself. We're residents of Santa Helena. And before I say anything, I would like to say that after listening to that short-term rental discussion, I love all my neighbors, every single one of them, so. I've, we have written comments, and I'm going to modify my prepared comments so that I can answer a couple of issues that came up during the discussion. But given that the forty-five-day public comment period allowed for the draft environmental impact report expired on July twenty-fifth, and we've been told that those two documents, the general plan update and the draft environmental impact report, are going on to the city council and to the planning commission for approval as a single entity or at, at the same time. We believe that even though the resident asked to have the land use designation of Monte Vista Avenue changed from medium to high-density, we think it's unusual that it should be allowed on the agenda of the planning commission at this time. The general plan update proposes numerous changes to the land use designation in the city, and the public was free to comment during the allowed timeframe. Accordingly, it is inappropriate for the planning commission to consider this single approach, this single proposal as it's described in Agenda Item Ten and should reject it based on the process and fairness. Not only is there a violation of the process, but we are also concerned with the notable inaccuracies and omissions in the content of the staff report for the Agenda Item Ten. In the first paragraph, it states that the request to change the land use designation on Monte Vista Avenue was made at July nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, planning commission meeting during public comments. And as we know now, that was incorrect. The meeting video verifies that. The resident presented her proposal to redesignate Monte Vista Avenue on August second, two thousand sixteen. The significance of that incorrect date of July nineteenth, two thousand sixteen is that the resident's proposal would then be within the forty-five-day comment period for the comments on the general plan update and the draft environmental impact report, while the correct date of August second, two thousand sixteen places her proposal outside of the public comment period. Another inaccuracy in Agenda Item Ten is that the staff report states that the April two thousand sixteen draft general plan proposal proposes to leave medium-density residential designation on the Monte Vista properties consistent with the nineteen ninety-three general plan, while proposing low-medium-density land use designation for the properties surrounding Monte Vista Avenue. And again, this is also incorrect, as was pointed out by one of the commissioners. In fact, the general plan update re-designates Monte Vista in as, the western portion of the Hunter property and Monte Vista as low-medium. And this is verified in three different figures. Figure two-point-one, general plan land use, figure two-point-three, residential areas, and figure two-point-eight, land use change areas in the general plan update, copies of which are attached to our written comments. Further, Agenda Item Ten, at the end of the planning director's discussion, references Attachment A, land use designations from April two thousand sixteen general plan with Monte Vista highlighted, but no such document is attached to the agenda. Agenda Item Ten also references Attachment B, staff-prepared density analysis for Monte Vista Avenue, which has numerous discrepancies when compared to the approved housing element. To see these inconsistencies, you just have to look at Table twenty-three, Multifamily Housing Survey for Santa Helena, February two thousand fourteen, which can be paid, found on page sixty-six of the two thousand fifteen housing element. For example, Attachment B lists nine units at thirteen thirty-seven Monte Vista, while housing element Table twenty-three shows eight. Attachment B also shows eight units for thirteen thirty and thirteen thirty-six Monte Vista, while the housing element Table twenty-three shows six units at thirteen thirty-six and makes no mention of thirteen thirty Monte Vista at all. And there are other inconsistencies. As a result, Agenda Item Ten should be removed from the agenda because it is in violation of the city's public, DIR, public process and because the staff report is inaccurate and incomplete, and it conflicts with that already in the approved housing element. As to the issue of the resident having made comments before to the staff, many of us have made comments to the staff. There are many issues that people discuss with the staff and have made comments in writing. But, and the staff doesn't always agree with us. In fact, a lot of times, they don't agree with us. It's hard to explain why this issue alone is brought to the commission when there are a lot of other issues that don't. On August second, the planning, uh, planning director told us that the final review for the general plan update and the draft EIR was coming back for the planning commission on September twentieth. It was going to be the final review from the planning commission before it went to city council. The planning commission and the public was going to get answers to, or responses to comments two weeks before, which ironically would be tonight. We don't, we haven't gotten any answers, but we have got an agenda item for one single issue. And the question is, why is that single issue more important than all the others to have a single-agendized item? And all I'm asking is that the rules be consistent. They be the same for all individuals, same for all issues, and that we not put a cloud over the entire process that puts into doubt exactly how we're going to handle things. Thank you. I'm going to give you my comment.
Be happy to respond to Ms. Bradshaw's comments.
Beg your pardon?
Be happy to respond to Ms. Bradshaw's comments.
Go ahead.
So the comment regarding the EIR and the general plan comments, as I mentioned, the forty-five-day comment period is strictly to the EIR. The, the general plan has no such restriction. There's no such limitation. They're two separate documents, and while of course it does make sense to bring them forward together as you, you would be reviewing and acting on your recommendation on both, they are absolutely not two, or not one document. They are two separate things, and the general plan update process is in no way governed by the forty-five-day comment period, as is evidenced by the last ten years of that process, I would, I would point to. With regards to the August second date of the comments, again, the nineteenth of the second is, is irrelevant, given the fact that the general plan is not limited by that forty-five-day process. And as will be presented in the comprehensive review of the comments received by the planning commission regarding these issues, this issue was brought up to the commission and staff in writing by Mary Stevenson in spring, late spring, early fall, or early summer. I don't have the exact date because I don't have the comment with me. But that will be evidenced by the dates on her comment letters, which do reference this. Again, it's, it's one hundred percent within the purview of the commission to decide what items they want to discuss as a part of their review of this finalized document and brought forward for recommendation to the city council. So it is completely appropriate for the planning commission. As is mentioned in the staff report, this is the seventh study session we've had in the last four or five months on this topic. So we're trying to finalize the commission's recommendation to the city council regarding numerous issues, one of which happens to be this neighborhood, but density in general has been discussed on many dates. Also, I believe Ms. Bradshaw is looking at the wrong document. So when she's references the fact that the Hunter property is identified as low-medium and that this prop, these properties are identified as low-medium, that's simply inaccurate. So it's unfortunate that the city has provided a incorrect document. However, we did correct and identify which document was correct numerous meetings ago. However, I will ensure that Ms. Bradshaw has the accurate document to review and comment on.
Can I answer?
I'm, I'm still responding to your comments. With regards to the housing element consistency, I, I, I don't know. I haven't reviewed that. How I came to this analysis is by actually going to the neighborhood. So I, I can't comment on the, how the consultant prepared their analysis or the information that went into the staff report or the housing element. However, the information that's provided here is actually what's on the ground. I went to the neighborhood. I talked to some of the neighbors. I counted doorbells and electricity meters to make sure that the information was accurate. When the information was not available from the assessor, which I'm imagining is probably where a lot of the information that went into the housing element was, was received from, because that's often how consultants work. They don't have the ability to go to every neighborhood. The assessor information was incorrect on most of these properties, which is why I felt the need to go to the neighborhood and actually verify it before I presented it to the commission. There's one other comment that I have notes here about the two thousand sixteen attachments. Oh, I'm sorry. That was one hundred percent accurate, and I apologize for the omission. I intended to also identify or provide the two thousand sixteen general plan land use graphic for this property, and I omitted that, however, it is available on the website. And then finally, with response to the September twentieth planning commission date, I was planning on talking about some of the issues associated with staff's ability to meet that date in my department report. However, I'm sure Ms. Bradshaw is well aware that some of those issues are based on the sheer number and volume of comments received on the general plan and the EIR itself and the staff's ability to actually provide thorough and comprehensive responses to those. So a fairly limited number of people provided comments on the EIR. However, some of them were very comprehensive and were required substantial amount of work in order to provide a adequate and thorough response. And some of that response may even require modifications to the document and recirculation of the document. So while it was our intention to meet that date, as we've gotten into the, the comprehensive level of comments and the need to prepare a thorough and adequate response, staff is not going to be able to meet that timeframe. So that's some information for the commission to consider, as well as the public. And I'm going to talk about the EIR timeframe a little bit more in my department report tonight.
Thank you.
So can I say something?
Go ahead.
I have no doubt that Ms. Stevenson made comments to the staff prior to the end of the forty-five-day comment period. My concern is that when we left on August second, we all were told that we were going to, the process was going to be that a final review of the planning commission was going to occur on the twentieth, and both the general plan update and the draft environmental impact report were coming back at that point. Two weeks ahead of that time, because I think Commissioner Koberstein asked to make sure that they saw the, the comments ahead of time. And you agreed that responses to the comments would be out two weeks before to the commission and to the public. That was the process. We find out today, not only are there no comments, responses to comments, but in fact, certain requests, certain comments, not only are being answered, but getting a full briefing in front of the commission. That, I think, is a, is outside the process that has been outlined. It may be entirely in their purview to do it. I'm only saying that process is not what the public was told, and it's not fair, and it is inconsistent with what we've been doing in the, in the past. And I think a lot of us have spent a lot of time on these issues, including Mary Stevenson. And I think everyone who's participated, and there have been a lot of citizens participate, should have the same benefits of addressing the commission. And we did upload those from the low-medium density did show on the general plan. As you see, it shows April twenty-fifth general plan update, and I told you that ahead of time. I'm not trying to keep anything from, any questions?
No. Thank you for comments. I have a couple of comments about the process. I was aware that Mary was working with the staff in, I think, April and May on this issue.
April.
Extensively. And it came to my attention that this was happening, I think, in June, mid-June, or whatever, at which point I believe I asked Victor and Noah to bring this up to the commission level. I, I tried to go back and figure out when I did that, and as best I can tell, it was the July nineteenth meeting, which was a meeting when Victor was here, and we talked about it afterwards. I said, if there is an issue here, I think it should come to the planning commission as part of this review. Now, why it took until now to get here, I don't know. But I made that request, and I would make that request of anybody else who has an issue out there that's bubbling up. Since we don't have a limitation on when we can hear comments, I'm more than. I'm more than willing to hear what anybody else has to say. So I appreciate that you might feel that this came out of the blue way after the comment period was over for the EIR. But in fact, I wanted to know what the facts were. You know, I heard there was some discussion going on, and I, I didn't know what it was about. I tend to feel about this, the way I do about some of the other comments we've received, citizens' voice. We've had people here who live on McCorcul who have questioned the high-density zoning on the north side of their street. Right now, we are recommending to the council that we undertake a comprehensive review of the zoning after the plan is adopted, and they may or may not accept that recommendation. I do think it's important tonight, though, to straighten out a couple of things. One of the reasons I wanted it brought here was because I thought the map was wrong. And I have heard that there are some errors on the map. For instance, it still shows Adams Street going to Silverado Trail, which is apparently an error that's going to be fixed. And I believe that showing this as low-medium density is obviously another error. I don't know if the ink bled over too far or what, but I don't think that was ever the intention. My feeling about this is, and you, you might think I'm contradicting myself here, but here we have high-density buildings at a certain density. And my concern is that when you deliberately make something non-conforming by putting it in a category that is below where it is, and you know you're doing that, you are sort of incentivizing deferred maintenance. You are taking away the incentive for a person to maintain their property and keep it to a standard that you would want, which is one of the reasons I could see putting this in a higher-density district. I don't think you ever want to do that. And that wasn't really an issue in the low-medium district. We were, I don't think we actually knew if we were going to end up with non-conforming structures there, but here, here we do. Second, we got comments during the planning period about how we might create more workforce housing or more affordable housing in the community. And one of those comments was to go into the areas where we have that housing now and to redevelop it and improve it and bring it up to a higher standard. And this is one of the places where that might be possible. And I wouldn't want to just shut the door on that possibility. You know, the letter we have is that the people who are living here now are not necessarily affordable. They wouldn't qualify for these bonuses and whatever. And so this, this is maybe someplace you think of as workforce housing. I'm, I'm not sure what you do. But I think we also have to think ahead to what the high-density regulations might look like when we get to that point. And so I would recommend that, you know, the council take a, a good look at this. I mean, this is an area where we would be deliberately making something non-conforming, and I think it should be part of our overall review if we get to that point. So I would, I'd be in favor of moving it along. I'm, I hesitate to make a specific recommendation from this commission on a specific street, but I think it's worthy of the same kind of consideration we want to give to everything else.
Well, I, I, I think it's already non-conforming. I, I would, I would feel comfortable sending it on to the city council as another item that needs to be part of, needs to be brought up and carefully studied when the comprehensive city rezoning and when that takes place within 60 days after the certification of the general plan. I think that's, I don't think we should send it forward for consideration now to put into the general plan. I think just like the, as we sent the low-medium, it should be in the little pack that goes, that's going to be part of what we talk about when we do the comprehensive look at the whole town, because we have to consider lots of things, not just this little piece, but we have to consider it in the context of the, you know, of everything, of density, of separation, east-west, all kinds of things. So I, I would, that's, that's what I would feel comfortable doing. But I wouldn't feel comfortable sending it there to, for them to make any kind of decisions as to whether, as to put it in the general, to change the general plan at this point.
I would like to just do what we did with the citizens' voice and other comments and send it on to the city council and see if they deem it worthy to put in the general plan now or if it's something that we have to revisit for an amendment. I, I think that that's, we need to follow what we've done for everyone else. And I do also would like to comment that the public comments, you know, I know it's the general plan and the EIR, but you know, discussions with city staff are technically comments and would probably follow. I'm sure she probably sent you an email of some sort, so I think that it would fall under that caveat. I think that we're not in trouble with the August 8th situation, July 19th.
I would, I'm, if, if I may, I just, that's something that is really news to me, and I would imagine news to many people in the public. First of all, it sounds like the process to get something here is to talk to city staff, you know, or to have some record of talking to city, city staff, and then, and then try to get someone on the, you know, planning commission to, to bring it up, unless I'm misunderstanding. And I, I did not know that the comment period did not refer to comments to change the general plan. I thought it was for both the EIR and the general plan. So I mean, that's my ignorance, but I don't, I think I'm, I'm pretty, I have a pretty normal kind of ignorance. And I think that there are a lot of people who don't know this in the public, that they could still be bringing things up to try to get, to try to get considered for the general plan. And I, I don't know what to do about that, except, you know, I, I don't know how that can be, how that can be communicated to people in, who have been here before with issues that are very, very, very important to them. So I mean, you know, to actually be thinking now of changing the general plan more, I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but to me.
Bobby, I don't think we're, we're asking to change the general plan. We're asking the city council, look at.
That's why I'm saying, if we're, if we're sending it to the city council with the idea that they can look at it to see if they would like to change the general plan, rather than to put it in the, a list of things that will be looked at when we do the comprehensive. Because I thought that we agreed that making a plan, a zoning change in the general plan at this time is, is, is not prudent in that it should be done.
Well, that, that's your opinion, Bobby.
Well, yeah, I thought that's how we sent the low-medium.
I, I agree with, with, with Mary and Sarah. Tracy?
Yeah, I'm a little torn on it. I, I support the idea of what she's getting at with the letter. I think it's inconsistent with what we've done in the past. However, I do think that it warrants, it has enough interest to send it on to the council, but I think just sending things on the council isn't really, all we're doing is tossing a ball up the road, so I don't know that that really accomplishes anything. But I do caution that we are not legislators here, you know, we're not setting policy. We're simply reviewing, and Bobby's comment, how did things get to us? Why can, why should the public go to the staff? That's how most things get to us, and they start a, a building project. So, you know, most of what we are doing is evaluating projects that have come before us through citizens, through the, the staff. So, you know, we, we're not starting from scratch, and we're not legislating, we're not creating policy. So, and we should steer away from those things. That's not what we do here. But I do think that in this situation, because we did send citizens' voice letter to the city council, then we should send it to them as worth them taking a look at, but with not a recommendation to act upon it. We're not, I don't believe that we're getting behind saying this should be added to the general plan. I wouldn't support that.
So you, you don't think it'd be prudent to say, we would like to see this added to the list of things that we're going to look at when we do a comprehensive.
I think it de facto is part of that, because it's a, it's a zoning issue. That I don't, we're not going to have to list those things out. We are looking, once the general plan is approved and ratified, we are going, but we've made a commitment to go back and review zoning, and so any inconsistent zoning, any zoning that's creating non-conforming structures, all that's, in my opinion, going to happen anyway. So we're not creating a little packet right now. It's just we're going over the whole thing.
Maybe not. I, I, maybe I'm remembering wrong. What do you remember about that?
We said that we're going to review zoning.
You know, we have this written document that is still sitting here waiting to get to the council when we finally get to that point. You know, I suggest we go back and take a look at what we said in that paragraph. I think we alluded, or maybe we even mentioned George David by name when we talked about other things that people brought to us in the zoning context. And to my mind, other than his rather extensive proposal, we have this, and we have had at least two or three people on McCorcul come and make specific reference to the north side of that street. And we might want to elaborate, you know, what we heard in that comment thing, and we can do it at another time. I think it's worthy of pointing out, because I think they are the only specific requests that we've had.
For zoning, yes.
So it sounds to me that there's a majority of the commission that's interested in, in referring this issue on to the planning, or I'm sorry, the city council for their review as a part of the general plan update?
Do you want to vote on that?
Yes, please.
Mary, would, did you, were you just suggesting that we incorporate the, the other, that, the other issue that you said?
I don't know if I want to open up, just based on how our conversations go, open up that for more discussion, more wordsmithing? Can't we let that be done? And this is just, and then I'm that, it's a new document? Pass it on?
So staff's goal is to, is to essentially bring back the full list of recommendations from the planning commission on to the city council with specific language where it was provided to staff? So you'll be able to see all the recommendations, policy-wise, similar to this, or language-wise where you wordsmithed? So that will be a comprehensive package that will be brought to the commission for final referral on to the city council.
As long as, I think, as long as those other issues, the zoning issues that, as Mary's mentioning, people did speak here and made public comment about. I think as long as they're mentioned too, in a, in an effort to be fair and just, since there was some public comment about this, just sending, just sending this over doesn't seem fair.
So, so staff's intention is to only take the things that were recommended by the commission, a consensus or a majority, I'm sorry, of the commission, not a consensus, a majority. So if an individual voiced concern over an individual issue and the commission did not take that up as a body, that will not be included into the recommendation on the city council. However, those individuals will be free to provide their direction or their comments directly to the city council as a part of the process.
As an individual.
As anyone is.
I mean, as a matter of fact, the neighbors from McCorcul could come back two weeks from now and give us something in writing. I think it's foolish not to acknowledge what they said, and I don't think it takes that much to change that provision in our recommendation. As I recall, they objected primarily on the basis of the lack of infrastructure on the street, the incomplete turnaround at the end, and the disjoint between high-density on one side and single-family on the other. And that's, that's really my summation of their comments. And here we have this, you know, standing on its own with its comments. I don't see the problem of men, mentioning these two specific things in our commentary.
I, I certainly agree with that. Does anyone else?
If I could just interject that, that another consideration for you all is the Brown Act. And tonight, the only thing on your agenda is this specific neighborhood. And so really, nothing else is before you this evening.
So I, I'd like a vote of the commission on recommending this issue specifically to the city council as a part of the commission's referral.
And we're recommending that they consider it on its merit. We're not recommending a specific action associated with it.
That's what I heard, is that the commission is recommending the council consider this.
That's a question I'm asking, yes.
From what I've heard, based on the, the, a, a majority of the commission, that the commission's interested in the council considering this, they are not recommending that it be, or telling staff to insert it in prior to it being considered by the council.
Right.
That's correct.
But you are going to correct the map.
Oh, 100%. Unfortunately, there's two different versions of the general plan, depending on which way you access that from the website. If, and, and I'll just say, if you go, you should be accessing the general plan through the planning department website, not through the homepage of the city.
They got 2210 plans.
I, I'm just looking at the one that's in my copy, and it shows it, you know, my copy has it.
So I, I, I'll, I, I will circle back and ensure that that is 100% accurate. But I, I've, anyone who I discussed, go to the planning department website and go into the general plan version that's accessed through the planning department website. There's also an old link that's on the general, on the homepage that does not take you to the correct location.
I just went to the one, and I pulled it off right under the draft environmental impact report that was updated, which is.
So I will happily discuss with you in the beginning of the.
Which that was the link that you gave.
Can we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I move that we recommend the planning, the city council review on its own merit, the correspondence sent to us by Mary Stevenson, and the consideration of rezoning Montevista to high-density.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
I abstain.
Vice Chair.
What did you do?
Abstained.
Oh.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Yes.
And Chair Kissner?
Yes.
Sarah Kissner.
Sure.
Well, I have a quick. I would like us to put on our agenda, if it's possible, for the next time, just a review of that specific section of our recommendation, if that's okay with everybody.
So which section is this?
It's the section where we recommend a comprehensive review of the zoning all over town, and we talk about comments that had been made to us.
Do you have a, a code section? I, I don't have my general plan with me.
You know, it's that, I'll, I'll get it to you. It's that large document that we reviewed twice, where we made recommendations, and then we had commentary.
It's the letter that, that Grace and Mary wrote that we kind of wordsmithed while we were here and got to consensus on various topics, I believe, correct?
Right.
And the goal would be to review that letter to, again, modify the language?
No, I think we need to look at it to, to remember exactly what we, what we said.
What I'm hearing is.
There were some changes with what we brought to the, that, that I brought to the commission.
Right.
I, I think right now it talks about that people came before us and made comments about zoning in neighborhoods without getting any more specific than that. I think that's what it says.
And you would like to make it possible to get more specific? Is that what you're saying?
I don't see why we shouldn't. We've only had, because I believe that goes on to talk generally about Mr. David's proposal for the core area of the town. And as far as I know, these are the only other two specific zoning topics that have come before us.
That and the McCorcul thing.
Yes.
I would like that, to see that on the agenda. I don't know if I, I don't know if I can vote, because I would have to recuse myself, but.
You would.
I, I just think we can look at it, I just think, if everybody's willing to do it.
We don't have to take, we just have to look at it.
Yeah.
We don't have to take a vote on it.
Be on the agenda, is that what you're asking? Could it be on the agenda?
I think we have to be clear in what we're recommending, or what this letter is going to do, though. I mean, it's, it's a recommendation to the council, but there's no expectation or commitment on their part to do anything with it. So, I mean, if, I, I think back to the idea of fixing zoning needs to be the bottom line. At the end of the day, it's a general plan, in whatever format the council approves it in, when that happens, we come back to all of these issues and address them through a zoning, through the zoning ordinance.
I think that's part of the reason we made this recommendation to, we said, for instance, whether or not the low-medium district is included in the plan, we felt it was important to come back and do a comprehensive rezoning afterwards. Not rezoning, review of the zoning.
I just don't want to misstate on the DS here what that, that letter is going to accomplish. It's simply a collection of thoughts and ideas, and they'll take it or they're not taking it.
And just to be clear, the idea is, is, is just that the planning commission be given a copy of the, the most recent language as amended by the direction from the commission for, for the review?
Right.
No analysis by staff, no staff report?
That's right.
I just want to see if we feel any different about the language. I think, Your Honor.
So this goes on the department report, which is.
I think you're on again.
That's correct. So I just, there's a few issues that have, that have occurred since we last chatted. Number one, there's been some staffing changes in the department. So city staff is now taking over full-time management of the general plan and general plan EIR, whereas previously. over full-time management of the general plan and general plan EIR, whereas previously, when I was first hired, I kind of focused on administration of the department and current development. Now that is no longer the case. We've hired another consultant, Lily Bianco. She's going to be doing current development along with senior planner Aaron Heacock and myself. But my goal is to focus on the general plan and the general plan EIR. I will be taking over management of that solely, so all comments can come to me directly. Victor Carnegie is no longer working for the city and so he is no longer working on that project. As mentioned previously, the general plan and the general plan EIR process, we were planning on, conceptually planning on bringing that item before the commission on September 20th. That date is no longer attainable due to, one, the volume of comments that were received on the general plan and the staffing changes that have occurred such that essentially we're changing gears and we need to make sure that we again provide a thorough and comprehensive response to the general plan EIR comments. Further, those comments could result in staff revising the EIR to the level where it will result in a recirculation. So if that occurs, obviously, we get another 45-day review and comment period prior to bringing it back to the planning commission for their review and the public. So just, the public should be aware of that. I would say it's primarily being driven by the number of comments that we received, while like I said, not a lot of individuals commented, they are fairly comprehensive and they pointed out some things that were valid and we need to fix in the EIR, which could trigger a revision that requires recirculation. Finally, as you know, the city issued a request for proposals on Adams Street, the 5.6-acre parcel on Adams Street, as well as the 1480 Main Street City Hall parcel, and that comment period ended a couple of weeks ago. In response, staff has been kind of creating a team, or prior to responding, I'm sorry, we've been finalizing the contracts with an RFP review team, so we were hiring several outside consultants to help review those. We're hiring a financial consultant, as well as a former city manager's worked on a number of RFP processes, so we're trying to bring in some expertise to look at those responses. But they will be presented on a conceptual level to the city council and the public on September 27th. So the idea is to present the concept plans to the council for the, and the public, for the public to get a chance to see what they are. There's been a lot of, I think, rumors and also a lot of interest, so people are interested in seeing what came in and what we have. So while a majority of the RFP process is confidential, because we don't want to disclose certain elements of the responses, financial elements are one of the keys, we will be wanting the public to see what potential projects have been, have been identified as respondents' responses. And then in mid-October, a town hall meeting will be scheduled to allow presentations from those respondents or developers directly to the public, so that'll be held most likely at the fire station and allow basically brief presentations of each of the proposals from the developers to the public in general, again, to allow another opportunity for public review and comment. And then the idea is that staff will finalize our analysis of all of the responses that we received. It'll include a review of the financial elements of the proposal, as well as the development elements of the proposals, and those will be brought back for the city council to review in December or January, depending on the number of comments received and kind of some of the other potential hiccups that could happen, holidays and vacations, et cetera. But that's the conceptual schedule. I think a press release was released today that identified that. Thank you. And just wanted to keep the public informed, because I know there's a lot of interest. So that concludes the department report.